Your blessings over us. We thank you for the hope that we have in you, even in the toughest times that we face. As an individual or as a nation, you are a source of strength, hope, peace and love. We lift up those that are in need this morning. Father, you know their needs. We ask you to touch each one of them and answer their prayers. Lord, on Monday, we'll remember and celebrate the history of our veterans of foreign wars. From its origin in eighteen ninety-nine by a group of Spanish-American veterans in Columbus, Ohio, it has grown to be the largest group of combat veterans. These outstanding veterans continue to honor the dead by helping the living. The VFW promotes patriotism and goodwill, and their generosity has provided military assistance through service programs to their local communities. We thank you for these men and women who continue to show their love by helping their communities with their dedication and efforts. Tomorrow, we'll remember some of those heroes that paid the ultimate price for our freedoms. As we honor and remember the Gold Star Mothers and Family Day. Our hearts, prayers and thoughts are with those that have lost a son or daughter in the service of our country. Father, comfort those that have lost these precious heroes by protecting our freedoms. We will never forget their sacrifice. Now, we ask for your hand to be over meeting this morning. May you get our steps daily, and may your grace be upon us. These things we humbly pray in your name. Amen.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll convene our commissioners' public meeting, and we'll ask for approval in minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Fair side.
Aye.
Aye. Any public comment on agenda items only? And from the audience?
Any online?
Online at this time.
Okay, then moving on, we have a proclamation. And Commissioner Sortman, I believe is going to read it.
I am thankful today that Commissioner Metzger asked me to read this proclamation. I'm sure many families have been touched by childhood cancer. I have personally been affected as I lost my goddaughter over ten years ago. Big cancer at age eleven. I know the devastation this has brought to one of my best friends in life and had changed him, her mother, and her stepmother forever. I'm proud to be able to read this proclamation today. Whereas Lycoming County children are the greatest resources and treasures. Their well-being is integral to our bright future. This month, Lycoming County honors these currently battling childhood and adolescent cancers. Those that have survived, their families, as well as those whose childhoods were cut short. And whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children adolescents, children adolescents. Approximately nine thousand five hundred and fifty children in the United States will be diagnosed with cancer in twenty twenty-five. One in two hundred and eighty-five children in the United States will be diagnosed by their twentieth birthday. And whereas childhood cancer spares no one, affecting children from every race, color, ethnicity and social economic status. Children who survive childhood cancer often experience long-term health problems. And whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer, as well as the need for increased funding. Only six new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer in the last thirty years. And whereas childhood cancer does not does not just affect the child, but it also impacts the entire family, friends, neighborhoods and entire communities. The financial burden can be devastating to the families and impacts all of us. Organizations such as Think Big have made it their mission to financially support families whose children have been diagnosed with cancer. And whereas we express sincere gratitude to those who work tirelessly to support, treat and take care of these children and their families, as well as those that strive to find treatment and cures for this deadly disease. We pay tribute to all those fighting this battle. May their courage and commitment continue to move us toward new cures, healthier outcomes and a brighter future for Americans' youth. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Lycoming County Commissioners do hereby declare the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to join a reaffirming and commitment to fighting childhood cancer that so deeply impacts families in our community and across the county. Signed, the Lycoming County Commissioners, Scott L. Metzger, Chairman, Mark C. Sortman, Vice Chairman and Mark Messina, Secretary. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we have a guest today from Think Big. Would they like to come up and say a few words? Thank you. And then I believe you said you traveled from Luzerne County this morning?
I did.
So thank you for traveling over and being with us.
It was a little crazy.
Did you say your name for the record?
My name is Diane Dutko, and I am the Executive Director of Think Big Pediatric Cancer Fund. I've been in that role for almost two years. What brought me to Think Big was the fact that I was a board member there for four years, and what brought me to being a board member was I lost a granddaughter to pediatric cancer. So all the things that you're saying, the families go through, it's very real. In my granddaughter's case, she had stage four neuroblastoma diagnosed when she was three. And she did fairly well, but five months of chemo did not move the needle at all, and they had to scramble to mix some cocktails because as you pointed out, drug, there's only been six drugs or something like that. We just don't have the resources and unfortunately, funding for pediatric cancer research is only about four percent in comparison to all the adult cancers. So she made it through her first stem cell. Three weeks later, needed her second. Unfortunately, the harsh chemo drugs took her life. She had multiple organ failure, although she died cancer-free. You know, she died at age three. But Think Big has given away about one point seven million dollars to about three hundred families who are battling pediatric cancer. Luzerne County has the highest incidence, followed by Lackawanna County and then Lycoming County. And, you know, they say it takes a village to raise a child. It takes an army and gestures, just like you're doing. Raise that awareness to create opportunities to be able to fund those kind of things. So we're very grateful at Think Big to know you care. You care about the families in your own neighborhood, in your backyard that are fighting this battle. It's tough, and sometimes they're here in treatment three years. So we allocate five thousand dollars per year. So you know, just think of one average family. That's a lot of money that we have to raise. So you're raising awareness for us. Tells our story when we're not here. So we appreciate it. We thank you and you know, I'm grateful for the proclamation because it means I don't know how to say it. It just, well, it's not something that you want to have joy over. You understand the battle and we feel like we're not alone. Thank you.
And we're so sorry for your loss.
Thank you. She would be eleven.
But we're thankful that you're there to carry on her memory and fight for this cause, continue to help others.
When?
We have to do that. We have to do that. You could either sit so good sour when you have a loss like that, or you can, you know, raise awareness. Do it in memory of someone. You gotta do it because we all need each other.
How much cancer research funding just got cut?
I don't know. The last of the statistics that I read, it's only four percent of being numbered. Now granted, it's a big number, but it's not nearly enough. If drugs haven't changed for these children, if those drugs that were supposed to help my granddaughter actually killed her, we still have a problem.
Yeah.
You know, so.
No, I was talking about the federal funding that got cut.
It got cut from the four percent. It's been four percent. It's been teetering between three and a half to four percent for years.
No, no, you're talking about pediatric research. I'm just talking about cancer research in general that just through the Doge cuts, how much got cut?
Don't.
Okay. Because I think that's one of the factors of, and as all the the federal funding, I mean, no one debates that there's governmental waste and that there was need to come in and make cuts. I'd heard from a friend of mine who's whose wife is dying of cancer, that of how much funding got cut for cancer research. What your program does is supports the families who are going through.
In the trenches, yeah.
Your program doesn't support your, the reason that there's only been six new drugs in thirty years is because we need research. They don't, you just don't discover those. So you know, as we or as groups applaud the governmental cuts, it's hard to applaud cuts for cancer research and then turn around and then say, oh, this is a terrible thing. So we need to, we need to be more careful where we're cutting and what we're applauding. Or then, because then our sympathies seem insincere. We need cancer research, or the numbers aren't going to get better. They're going to get worse.
Our mission is simply different because we saw a gap in the whole system setup for families battling pediatric cancer. They have their wishes. There is research going on. St. Jude's is the pioneer for that. We applaud their efforts. We just don't do that because there's families that are on the verge of being evicted, having their electricity shut off. I presided over an eviction hearing. I have had a family have their electricity shut off. As they're struggling, struggling to keep to keep fruit on the table. So that's why we do what we do.
Absolutely. And God bless you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, anything you want to add? No, thank you. I'd like to present the proclamation to her. I'd like to present the proclamation to you and get a picture. Okay, thank you. Thank you for traveling over. Okay, moving on. Nikki.
Good morning.
Morning.
Presented for your ratification are invoices due through October first, twenty twenty-five, to be paid on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of two million, two hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-six cents. Eighty-three point five four percent out of general fund, point three four percent out of Act thirteen, point two four percent out of other grants, thirteen point five eight percent out of RMS and two point three one out of escrow.
You couldn't get a third week in a row under a million, could you?
Couldn't do it.
She said she wasn't going to.
I did. I warned you last week.
Motion to accept the count's payable.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Is there any questions or comments for Nikki?
No, thanks.
You're in on all fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, Mike.
Hey, good morning. Well, let's see, the elected official personnel action, this was actually a transfer from the Sheriff's Department. The District Attorney Narcotics Enforcement Union, Shayna Reagan, Assistant County Detective. Full-time, twenty-seven sixty-eight per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, she did a good job as Deputy Sheriff. I'm sure she'll do well in her new position. So their motion or we don't need one because selecting officials. So congratulations and we wish her well. Personnel actions.
Yeah, personnel actions. Approve the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment. Subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions outlined here in attachment A. The first one, there's actually a promotion. Domestic Relations, Christina Travis, Domestic Relations Officer Two in the DRO, full-time, forty-seven thousand, five hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents per year, seventy-five hours per pay period with an effective date of nine, three, twenty twenty-five. Then the other two are new hires, the prison Brett Bennett, Correctional Officer, Union, full-time at twenty dollars per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date, September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. And then Taquan Hoffman in the prison as a correctional officer, Union, full-time at twenty dollars per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date, October sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, your motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All, any questions or comments? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. And we want to congratulate Christine on her promotion. And welcome the two new correctional officers to the county prison and to the Lycoming County team. So thank you.
Thank you.
Action items.
Gary, is Gary online?
Gary, you on the line?
This is Donald Hassan plug filling in for Gary.
Thank you, Donald.
Item five-one is vote to approve the change order for R and L development for Phase One closure, extending the project to November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Project got off to a little bit of a late start because of the wet weather earlier this year.
So it's just a change in the extending the project deadline. That's the only change.
Deadline.
Okay, no change in price.
No change in price.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maya. Morning.
First item I have for you, five point two, is vote to approve the agreement with Clinton County Correctional Facility in the amount of seventy-three dollars per inmate per day. This is just a renewal that we do and we use on an as-needed basis for prison inmate housing.
Okay. We don't have anybody up there, obviously. I don't think so.
I don't believe so.
No, we have beds open in our county prison, so. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
No seconds. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
On the next item I have for you, five point three, vote to ratify the request for a fifty-day extension for the Emergency Watershed Protection project through November sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. As you saw, the prior weeks, we've had some change orders with that program. A lot of it's just because of changing the regulations with regards to how the project can be done through DEP. As a result, it's now extending the overall contract with these vendors to complete the necessary work within the timeframe of their contract.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Ah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, buddy.
Adrian.
Yes, Commissioners, good morning.
Morning.
I am seeking approval of a professional services agreement with Attorney Sharon McLaughlin to provide legal representation as needed when the public defender's office has a conflict. The cost is ninety dollars per hour, and this is an approved budgeted item.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Ah.
Aye. Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye. Morning, Kate.
Good morning. We are requesting approval for the agreement with Susan Shanaman, Solicitor, who's been with us for probably five or more years now. This is budgeted for forty-three hundred dollars for next year.
Okay, and it is a twenty twenty-five approved budget item?
Yep.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Where is she? Is she?
She lives Harrisburg way. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Twenty twenty-six, okay. Thank you.
Morning Commissioners. Good morning Director. Five point six, seeking your approval to renew our maintenance agreement with Micromane in the amount of two thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. This is for a three-year renewal at no more than a three percent increase for the next two years. And then this is a twenty twenty-five approved budget.
Okay. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Morning.
Morning Commissioners. First item is five point seven, seeking your approval for change order number four with Dixon Air Conditioning and Refrigeration. This is for the coroner's bill that's currently going on. There is no price increase on this, so we're just seeking approval for the change order.
What's the change order for?
There was some air conditioning split units. They weren't able to get the ones that originally were quoted. So they had to order a different brand, different style.
Okay, all right. Motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Next one is five point eight. Again, this is for the Commissioners build. This is change order number five with Silver Tip. They were doing the plumbing work, and again, this is an approved budget item with no price increase. Off the top of my head, I can't remember exactly what that one was.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All, all fair side?
Aye.
Next one is item five point nine. Vote to approve change order number nine with Keestrup Construction, again with the coroner's bill for eleven thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Allowance funds will be used to cover this cost.
And what is the reason for the change order?
Again, I don't have that in front of me.
What I read here is that is install missing grits, clips and sag rods that were not shown on the elevation.
Oh, yeah.
You know, steel members needed to support the metal wall panels. Work was already done. That's good. Okay. When I, I know with Steve and Cam, you guys are working on making sure this type of stuff doesn't happen in the future, that it's approved after the fact. But I know with the changes we've made internally, you guys are approaching it differently in the future.
All right, I appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
My second. All fair side?
Aye. Aye. Can I, if we go back to five point seven with the one with Dixon ACNR on the, on our agenda, it says no price increase. When you go to the page on the, at the bottom where it says change order breakdown, we actually end up with an increase of twelve thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars.
Correct. To make sense of all that, when the contract was, or the agreement was built, they took and created a fund for each contractor or subcontractor. They set aside so much allowance for each contractor. So if they had change orders or something come up that wasn't in the original plan, they were able to pull from that money. Money was already there. So that's a case of five point seven. That if they were able to pull from that.
From that fund.
That fund. Yeah.
So really, five point seven and five point eight, instead of saying no price increase, should say allowance funds being used. Would that be correct? Okay. All right.
Next one is five point ten.
Wait a minute, five point ten. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Yep, seeking your approval for change order number ten, again with Keestrup Construction for the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-seven cents. And allowance funds would be used for that as well.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Oh, all fair side? Aye. I'm just going to make a comment that Shannon just pointed out to me. So when you look at like the Dixon one, the contract sum has no change to it because the contract was for the, as Steve was saying, the contract has the higher dollar amount in it. But the contract doesn't change, but we are paying them for, for the work.
The total contract does not.
Does not change, which is why it's saying.
Because of the building contingents.
Right, so that's why it says no increase in price.
Any kind of bidding process.
Okay, so what happens if the allowance that sits there isn't you?
We get that.
That's bad.
Okay. And between, between Steve, Cam and Shannon, they have discovered some monies there that will not get used and will come back.
Okay.
I think you're up to about a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Which is good news for county taxpayers. Okay, five point eleven.
Yep, five point eleven, seeking your approval for change order number eleven with Keestrup Construction, amount of two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Again, allowance funds used for that. Well.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Last one is item number five point twelve. Seeking your approval for change order number twelve with Keestrup Construction, the amount of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-one cents. This was not an approved budgeted item, but funds are available.
That's work that's been completed already as well.
Correct.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Morning, Kelsey. It's very.
Right, so I have five thirteen for you. The first one is change order number four with Shiloh paving. That's an increase cost of two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. That's to add two bulkheads, which are control units to one of the cross pipe projects they are working on.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you, Kelsey.
So I also have, yeah, I have the last one too. I have five fourteen, and this is change order number five with them. We actually removed one of the cross pipes from their workload due to unexpected conditions. So this is actually a change order reducing the price by twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars.
That's good news.
Yes.
Those are change orders we like, Kelsey.
Yeah, I know.
Are we going to have to put a new one back in at some point?
Since we do not actually own the infrastructure, it is not our responsibility.
Okay. Okay. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I will second that.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey. Thing, any one of you?
I don't really have much.
I really don't. I'm not gonna, not gonna bore everybody with contracts and doing work prior to approval again this week. So I would say I'm thrilled that we got some rain. And as always, I think it's exciting to be a Lycoming County resident and thrilled to be here. Other comment, anybody from the audience? Morning.
Tony Cooper, Williamsport. I just wanted to, this is a public service announcement. It's Suicide Prevention Month. Established in two thousand eight, supported by many local organizations, including NAMI, which is the National Alliance for the Mentalill. The purpose of Su- Suicide Prevention Month is to reduce stigma. It's, research has shown that discussing suicide opens pathways, not increased risk. Always encourage the conversation. In our community, unfortunately, we have survivors of, of suicide. And we have to do the things that we can to support them. The overreaching theme is suicide is preventable. And our community has resources available, and there's many events that you can follow online uh, to help bring awareness to suicide prevention. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Tim. And Kate, didn't Chuck tell us they're up this year in Lycoming County?
And Mr. Cooper is right. It's, it's something that can be prevented. You know, just reach out to people and you know, take time to just ask them if they're okay. You know, sit down and have a conversation with them and, and listen. Biggest thing you can do is listen. And just to have, have an open mind and listen. Then try to help them and guide them to the resources that can assist them. Thank you. Any other public comment? Any online?
We do have some online. Um, I'm gonna read the first one from Harper Will Try, "Spreading Awareness on and Combating Things With Which Adversely Impact Our Children Is A Laudable Just and Noble Goal." The rest of the comments, um, aren't agenda items and in my opinion, in a way to remain neutral as the county, because there are comments between people. Um, we will just not be reading those out publicly. And it will be in the record.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, we've completed our agenda, so our next meeting will be October 2nd. Um, 10:00 AM right here in this meeting room. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.